This hearing in the Subcommittee on Nutrition entitled "The Next Farm Bill: Pathway to Success for SNAP Households Will Come to Order." Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Nutrition Subcommittee hearing. Thank you to everyone for taking the time to be here, particularly our three witnesses. As you know, over the past two and a half years, the committee has undertaken a comprehensive review of SNAP. The review has helped provide members with a better understanding of SNAP, the population it serves, how it is administered, and ways it can be improved. While witnesses in previous hearings have touched on education and employment pathways for SNAP households, today's discussion is dedicated to examining ways for eligible SNAP households to improve their education and labor force involvement as a aim for independence. Career pathways are not a new approach to helping individuals move up the economic ladder and out of poverty, but there are new avenues to preparing work-capable SNAP recipients for employment and education. Pathway approaches, which we will hear about today, reorient existing education employment services from endless disconnected programs to a structure that syncs employer needs with individuals' education, training, and employment needs. This cohesive approach brings together resources, funding, data, policies, partnerships, and perhaps most importantly, shared performance measures that continue to allow for the development, ceiling, and sustainability of these pathway programs. And my work with the Career and Technical Education Caucus has enhanced my awareness of the importance of career and technical education, or skills-based education, as we work to advance policies that improve skilled labor education and support job growth. Now, I share that same passion here and hope to discuss and explore ways to couple services with employment and training to ensure our work-capable SNAP recipients move to a sustainable point of self-reliance. Again, I want to thank all of our witnesses for sharing their time and expertise, and I now recognize my friend colleague, Mr. McGovern, for any opening comments that he would like to make.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the witnesses for being here, and I want to applaud some of their innovation and look forward to hearing some of their recommendations. But I'm just going to not refer to my prepared text for a minute because I am a little concerned as we gather here. This is our 23rd hearing on SNAP, and I just read the Republican budget where it's proposed that there is, as a proposal out there for a $10 billion cut in SNAP, $10 billion. You know, in the last farm bill, there were savings of $104 billion. $92 billion came from SNAP. I know it's become convenient for some to look at SNAP as an ATM machine to pay for other things, but SNAP is a vital, important program that millions of families rely on to put food on the table, and it's not a particularly generous benefit. The average benefit is about $1.40 per person per meal. You can't even buy a cup of coffee for that. That's why many SNAP recipients end up at food banks at the end of the month. And yes, we need to figure out ways to help get people to be secure and have a job, and we're all for work. But understand one thing: 67% of the people on this program are not expected to work or cannot work. They're children, they're senior citizens, there are people who are disabled. Of those who can work, a majority work, and so let's get that on the record. You know, I'm tired of the perception that somehow everybody on SNAP is lazy or doesn't want to work. The fact is, the majority of them who are able to do work, the question is, why do they earn such low wages? Why does work pay so little in this country? And then of those who are not working, who we believe are able to work, we need to explore this population. You know, this able-bodied adults without dependant policy, where if you don't have a job within three months, or you don't have a, in a work training program, you lose your benefit for three years. Well, that population is complicated, and I've come to learn that in that population, you have people who are, you know, chronically homeless, you get people who can't read, we have people who, you know, include kids who are aging out of foster care, we have people with undiagnosed mental illnesses, and we're now learning we have, a lot of veterans are falling into that category. I'd like to ask unanimous consent to insert in the record an article that appeared in the Washington Post on May 22nd that talks about one Navy veteran in Maine who was thrown off of the benefit because he couldn't get, he couldn't get work within the prescribed period of time, and who was living off of squirrels that he was skinning and eating, that he was, that was his only source of food because he lost his SNAP benefit.
Without objection.
So I, I point this out because, you know, if we're, if we're talking about how we help transition people who can work into the workforce, we need to understand that you don't do it by cutting the program by $10 billion. And we talk about things like the cliff, we have to understand that it's not just SNAP. I mean, it includes housing, it includes, you know, daycare, it includes a lot of things that are not part of what this committee has jurisdiction over. And, and I just, you know, again, I would urge my colleagues that, you know, again, the perception in Washington about SNAP and about those who receive the benefit does not reflect the reality. And yet, we can find people who abuse the program, I'm sure, and, and we can find people that, you know, ought to be in a job and who are not, but the vast majority of people in this program, you know, I think would prefer not to be. And being poor in this country is hard work, and I would like to think that we would recognize that, and this budget that has just been unveiled today does not. And by the way, not only are there cuts in SNAP, I mean, we see cuts in things like Pell Grants. You want, you know, children of SNAP families to be able to have a future, you know, the one thing you don't do is cut their education benefits. So I appreciate the chair's indulgence, but I am really angry at this budget, and I will just say one final thing. If this is the budget, and this is what we're going to see in the farm bill, a cut of $10 billion, and I think that may be a floor, not even a ceiling, then I will predict right here and now, we will not have a farm bill. And I certainly will do everything I can to kill a farm bill that has a $10 billion cut in it. You'll back my time.
I appreciate, just to clarify, because we're probably seeing the same budget information, the $10 billion, there were no specifics that was coming from SNAP, it was the agriculture budget.
If I could just say, Chairman, I'm looking at the summary, and all the references are to SNAP and, and more hurdles and work requirements, I don't see any relationship to any other, any other programs in it. So I, again, in the past, SNAP has accounted for $92 billion of the $104 billion in savings. Thank you.
The chair requests that other members submit their opening statements for the record, so the witnesses may begin their testimony and ensure that there is ample time for questions. I'd like to welcome our witnesses to the table. Very much appreciate their participation, bringing their expertise here as we, for this very important topic on nutrition. Dr. Harry Holzer with John Lafarge Jr., Professor of Public Policy, MacCord School of Public Policy out of Georgetown. Mr. Eliyahu of Lotser, student, how'd I do?
Pretty good.
We're off to a good start, then. I've always learned that there's only one thing you come into this world with and you leave with, and it's your name, and so I hate to mess those up, you know? Those are, those are important. Student success coordinator on Inaco Community College Economic and Workforce Development and Pathway to Careers out of Syracuse, New York. Ms. Heather Reynolds, President and Chief Executive Officer, Catholic Charities, Fort Worth, Fort Worth, Texas. Dr. Holzer, please begin when you're ready. Five minutes for your oral testimony, your written testimony for all three of you have been distributed ahead of time to all members of the Subcommittee and the light system's pretty, the first four minutes will be a green light, the final fifth minute is a yellow, and when it hits red, we just ask that you wrap up whatever thought that you're at at that point. So, Mr. Holzer, Dr. Holzer, please go ahead with your five minutes of testimony.
Thank you very much. Chairman Thompson, Ranking Member McGovern, committee members, thank you for inviting me today to testify on the role of employment and workforce policy for SNAP recipients. I can support an agenda to increase work and earnings among SNAP recipients, especially in the currently tight labor market, but such an agenda must recognize the great variation among recipients in their training potential, their basic skills, their job readiness, and their need for work supports. It must allow different rules and services for different categories of recipients. One size cannot fit all. Any major changes should be based on rigorous evidence of cost-effectiveness, which is currently scant. And to implement such changes, every state agency should receive enough resources to assess each recipient's abilities and needs, to provide a range of work or training options to them, both within mandatory or voluntary SNAP ENT programs. Changes like these would take considerable time to implement and must be done carefully and appropriately. I'd like to make three additional points this morning. Point number one, the most effective forms of workforce training in terms of generating long-term improvements in worker employment are those that actively engage employers. The best models here are sector-based training and work-based learning, like apprenticeships, especially in high-demand occupations and industries for any state or region. And of course, the high-demand industries tend to be healthcare, construction, advanced manufacturing, IT, transportation logistics, and even the higher end of retail and hospitality. More SNAP recipients should have access to such models of education and training, which would benefit themselves, but also benefit employers who are seeking more skilled workers. It would reduce SNAP expenditures over time and raise overall economic productivity. But only workers with fairly strong cognitive and employability skills will benefit from such training, and I believe we should use the roughly 3,000 local one-stop offices or American Job Centers to more fully assess recipients and link them with appropriate training opportunities. Point number two, most workers can also benefit from steady work experience over time, though the earnings and productivity gains that that approach generates are smaller than we get out of training. Some workers, in order to work, will need more support, such as active job search assistance and placement activity, transportation, or childcare, if we want them consistently to work. And individuals who are deemed hard to employ with a set of multiple work barriers, such as very poor skills, very little work experience, physical, psychological disabilities, or substance abuse, that population will have difficulty accumulating positive work experience in the job market. We have also found that job search or work fair alone for these populations has very limited effects on their subsequent earnings. Point number three, any expansion of work requirements under SNAP should be imposed carefully, allowing for clear exemptions that are consistently implied for those with physical or psychological ailments, substance abuse problems, or those caring for small children, even if those children are above the age of six. The federal government should provide additional administrative funding if we require work activities to a greater extent, as well as funding for the work or service opportunities and supports that many SNAP recipients will need if they are to work. Indeed, for those who cannot find employment, training, or some positive work experience or activity should be provided. I recently authored a paper with Robert Dorr of the American Enterprise Institute and Brent Arel of ICF, two friends of mine who are conservatives, and we came up with a set of policies if we were going to, if we're going to implement stronger work requirements. One of the principles was, if people cannot find the job on their own, they should be offered some positive activity, even for five or 10 hours a week before they are sanctioned or kicked off the rolls. In our view, there was a package of supports and also subsidized jobs that would have to go along with the imposition of stronger work requirements. And since we have relatively little clear evidence right now on how such changes to work requirements would affect SNAP recipients, we believe we should pilot and evaluate any major changes before implementing them, to see how they really work. And a set of rising work supports, like more generous EITC or Child Care and Transportation, should be provided along with this. The evidence right now, the rigorous evidence from research, does not suggest strong negative effects on employment from current SNAP policies, and therefore, we shouldn't make that assumption and therefore argue for much more stringent requirements when the current evidence does not support that point of view, even if theoretically we can find some cliffs. So I'm going to stop there. Thank you for inviting me today, and I look forward to a robust discussion afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Holzer, for your testimony. Appreciate it. Now, I recognize Mr. Lotser for five minutes of testimony.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McGovern, members, thank you for inviting me here. This testimony will outline a method we use at Inaco Community College that helps SNAP beneficiaries start on the path out of unemployment and out of the ALIS category, asset limited income constrained yet employed. Our career training programs emphasize soft skill training and relationships with employers and with students. Under the leadership of Michael Metzger, our team has implemented this model at colleges in Arizona, New Jersey, and now in Syracuse, New York. Syracuse has the highest rate of extreme poverty for African-Americans and Hispanics of any city in the country. In 2010, there were 19 neighborhoods where over 40%, that's four zero, of the residents lived below the poverty line. SNAP is necessary. Syracuse is also a refugee resettlement city. I believe that approximately half the students in our workforce programs either receive or have received SNAP benefits. Many of our students are third-generation recipients of, of one or another benefit program, and this influences their mindset. Some have grown up with the expectation that because their parents or neighbors received benefits and lived in very poor conditions, they will too. We try to help our students overcome that mindset. The mindset of survival in extreme poverty is not career-success mindset, and any program to raise people out of extreme poverty needs to address mindset change. We currently operate seven programs in healthcare, food service, and technical mechanical studies. The programs all include 10 elements. First, find out which industries you're hiring locally now and for the next 18 months. Second, choose entry-level jobs that provide a living wage and a path to a sustainable wage. Three, keep tuition costs within Pell eligibility levels, that I'm sorry to hear may be changing, so that students graduate with no debt. Four, let employers tell us what to teach. We use a Canadian process called DAICOM, developing a curriculum. Five, teach employability skills, not just academic and technical skills. Soft skills training helps with mindset change. Six, provide proactive in-program retention efforts to help people overcome barriers by connecting them with college and community resources. Seven, utilize competency-based education. Most employers are not interested in students' grades, they want to know, can they do the job? So therefore, when a student demonstrates competency, they finish school. Eight, at the end of our in-house education, we send a student out to an employer for 100 hours of observation on the job. If the person obtains employer approval, they receive a certificate and move on to element nine, which is, help them get a job by connecting them with employers. If they haven't already been offered a job during our practicum, we help them connect with another employer. Number 10, maintain contact with students up to two years post-graduation to gather data and reconnect them with employers if necessary. Now, not everyone comes from extreme poverty, some turn to us to avoid supplemental assistance. I'll give you one example, some details changed for privacy, and then I'll finish with recommendations. Hanifa was born and raised as a Muslim in Yemen. I know it's a little different from what I wrote there, but this is one of those details. At a certain point, she converted to Christianity. Death threats and attempts on her life ensued, including when an uncle tried to kill her. She married, and they applied for refugee status in the U.S. Arriving with her husband and his family in Syracuse, she was soon working as a cashier and he as a delivery driver. But then, he was caught in a car accident and she sustained a work injury. Neither could work, but she pressed on. Hanifa received a grant from our Chamber of Commerce to join OCC's food service program. She wanted to nourish others. Unfortunately, her husband's family frowned upon her moving forward into an independent career while he was still unemployed. Domestic violence ensued. That's where relationship comes in. Her instructor and the student success team helped her finish her studies and start a small business by guiding her through a workman's compensation claim, the challenging law process, finding a women's shelter, improving her English, and dealing with a new culture all in under a year. As we've nurtured her, she is starting to nurture others with her food business. Not easy, it demands relationship, but it's worth it. The bigger picture is a serious challenge. As the wealth gap widens, it becomes more likely that currently poor and impending poor will need food assistance. A counterbalance to the extremes of wealth aggregation and wealth emptiness is human relationships, not just touchy-feely, but as a strategy. We recommend that you support the programs with three essential elements: employer relationships, student relationships, and soft skill education. Training out of poverty is possible, we can vouch for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lotser, for your testimony, and now, Ms. Reynolds, go ahead and proceed with your five minutes of testimony whenever you're ready.
Chairman Thompson, Ranking Member McGovern, and members of the Subcommittee on Nutrition, thank you for having me. My name is Heather Reynolds, and I'm CEO of Catholic Charities, Fort Worth. We have one goal: to end poverty, one family at a time. Here's what I know: with our, when our organization shifted from serving families to ending poverty with families, we quickly saw that we needed to invest our resources differently. My message to you today is simple: we need you to invest differently, too. The farm bill specifically, as it relates to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, should be a pathway for success for Americans. Families in poverty face many challenges, from food to housing to toxic stress. These benefits address one of these critical needs. However, these alone do not propel an American family forward. Reform must focus on shifting to a comprehensive solution to moving people out of poverty. First, benefits should not have a sharp cutoff based on earnings at 130% of the federal poverty line. Eligibility requirements need to provide a gradual decline in benefits until participants reach a living wage. Programs with sharp cutoffs have you, the federal government, working against those of us in the field. We are serving a single working mother with one child. She makes $25,000 a year and utilizes $357 a month in food stamp benefits. We are walking with her as she pursues her dreams to become a nurse and to support her son free of government assistance. Her first step is to become an X-ray technician, a certification that takes her six weeks of study to achieve. She finds a job earning a dollar more an hour while she continues her education. The bad news: she now makes too much to qualify for these benefits. Even worse, with her increased wages, losing this benefit means a net decrease in her overall income. We have made the working poor our people at Catholic Charities, but you and I often aren't working toward the same goals, because the minute a family starts moving forward with our help, they are pushed backwards because of the way benefits are structured. It makes more financial sense to stay on public assistance because earnings cannot increase fast enough to outpace lost benefits. My second point: without intensive case management, families will not move forward. And I do not mean the transactional model of case management. I am about advocating for someone who can come alongside the families that we serve, understand their needs, and work with them for the long haul until they reach a place of self-sufficiency. We run several randomized control trials with the University of Notre Dame's Lab for Economic Opportunity. One of those is called Stay the Course. We know that a credential is the game changer between minimum and living wage employment, but a major provider of those credentials, community college, have graduation rates under 20% nationwide. We know low-income students often don't graduate because life happens, and education is often the first thing to go. We designed a study to fix this. Participants were divided into groups of students who received case management and financial assistance, those who received just financial assistance, and those who received no help at all. After one year of study, we saw that students who got only financial assistance actually did worse than those who got no services at all. Yet those with case management, with some assistance, were more likely to reach their goals. After six semesters, those in case management were twice as likely to persist in those, their education, and females were four times more likely to walk that graduation stage. A second example is Padua, another trial we're running. Our key intervention is case management to move families out of poverty. Of the families involved, 80% are women, 23% are married, 50% have a high school diploma or less, the average family earns $18,000 a year, and 60% are on food stamps. But after just one year of intensive case management, we see some pretty incredible changes. Monthly labor earnings are up by 17%. There's a 21% increase in the hourly wage, a 30% rise in full-time employment, a 19% decrease in spending, and a 41% drop in credit card debt. This further emphasizes my point: it's not just my gut that tells me case management makes the difference, it's data and analytics that show me, when we work with families in poverty through case management, amazing things happen. My message today is that we need to invest differently. More Americans will experience income stability if we get these federal programs right. Farm bill reform must include fixing the welfare cliff problem and doing more than giving away money. We must break this cycle of poverty for families and for their children. Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds, thank you for your testimony. The chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate the members' understanding. I'll take the liberty of asking, take my five minutes first for questioning. On June 15th, 2017, the President issued an executive order to expand apprenticeships in the United States. The executive order aims to expand apprenticeships by further enabling individuals to participate in paid and relevant workplace experiences and opportunities. Apprenticeships can potentially offer affordable pathways to secure positions with more sustainable wages. Can anyone speak to the value of apprenticeships and what both the initial investment and long-term outcomes look like? Please, go ahead, Dr. Holzer.
Well, I'm a very strong supporter of an effort to expand apprenticeships. They, they have strong impacts on the earnings of the workers who receive the training, long-term impact. They also please employers who engage them because they know that they're training the workers for the skills that, in fact, they're looking for. I think these programs are best when they are also combined with some classroom training at a community college and some broader credential. Then the key question is, why are there only a half a million apprenticeships, registered apprenticeships, in the country, and what can we do to improve employer take-up? But I applaud efforts by the Trump administration, by But I applaud efforts by the Trump administration, by the Obama administration, to try to move that ball forward. I think it's a positive policy.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I can add just a little from the recipient's side. I know that when I talk to people to interest them in our programs, the one program that we have that leads to an apprenticeship, every time I say the word, people perk up their ears. And it feels like a very safe path, because there's, not to harp, relationship in there where they feel like they're going to be taken care of and guided through it. And indeed, they are. Aside from it being really good economically, people are just very ready for it. And as a matter of fact, our manufacturing program, we've shortened it and worked with our local manufacturing association to where we have a guarantee that if somebody graduates our program and stays in a job for six months, they will put them into an apprenticeship program. And it's just very appealing to people who want to go that path.
Very good. Ms. Reynolds, you had touched on something that I've spent considerable time looking at from different examples, are all the 70-some welfare programs that we have. And I know today our focus is SNAP. But can you give any other examples, other situations that you observe where poverty cliffs have really has worked against, you know, someone who started and they were in an eligibility level, and then they were successful, because you don't, you start out, but it's one step at a time, where the poverty cliffs have worked against the goal of moving individuals to self-reliance?
I'll never forget about a year ago, I was sitting in an appointment shadowing one of our case managers, working with a woman, and this woman, the case manager was talking to this woman about starting savings behaviors, even if it was just going to be a dollar a week, but just to get in that pattern. And the woman shared, "I'm a great saver." And the case manager said, "Well, tell me more." And she said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I save. Every time I go and use my debit card, I pull out cash back of 10 bucks and I save it." And I thought, "Well, that's a good strategy." And he said, "Well, how much do you have saved?" And she goes, "I don't know, about $8,000." And he goes, "Great, okay, let's talk about that. Where do you have it, dah dah dah?" She had it in the back of her closet. And the reason she had it in the back of her closet, because she was about two steps, which would take about another six months, away from getting to living wage, and she knew if she put that money in a bank, she would lose all public benefits. It would cause her and her family to go into debt before she could actually make it. And so what we often find is people are having to make these financial decisions and financial choices that they shouldn't have to make. Oftentimes, work doesn't pay in our country, and we need to make work pay in our country because the more we can pull people forward and invest in them for the long haul, the more people who aren't going to need SNAP and TANF and housing in the future.
Right. Dr. Holzer, thank you. Dr. Holzer, your testimony speaks to the needs of workers with skills, experiences, and needs across the spectrum, ranging from those who need simpler supports to those with multiple barriers to achieving sustainable employment. How can SNAP best engage and support workers from these various backgrounds so that they can all move towards self-sufficiency? And what are the different strategies, policies, investments needed to engage those who are work-capable in the labor market?
I think it starts with careful assessment. And I think, at least in many parts of the country, too little assessment goes on of worker skills and worker needs. When you have strong assessment, and I think, I would look to some of the SNAP E&amp;T pilots funded in the last farm bill. My impression is that some of them try to do more careful assessment. One group of folks are those who are trainable, who have strong cognitive experience, have had some attachment to the workforce, have employability skills, and they could be referred, maybe through the local workforce agency, through the local job center, to sector partnerships, career pathway programs, or even apprenticeships in the high-demand industries. A second group may not be quite ready for that, but might, with the appropriate supports, be able to work steadily if the supports include childcare assistance, transportation, et cetera. And then, of course, the third category, I consider those who are harder to employ because they have multiple barriers. So we start with the assessment. We refer people to existing services that are appropriate for what the assessment tells us. If there's insufficient funds, maybe we expect SNAP to provide some of those additional services or experiences. But of course, that would take more money, not less in the budget.
Dr. Holzer, thank you. Now, recognize the Ranking-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to just go back to my opening statement when I sounded the alarm bells about the budget. The reason why I am so concerned, I'm just looking at the summary of the budget that was released, when it comes to the, talking about cuts and savings and the farm bill part of it, there's no mention of any farm programs, no mention of crop insurance, no mention of anything other than SNAP and work requirements and more hurdles. And so I think that's the intention here, and I didn't hear anybody here say that the way we help people get out of poverty is to cut SNAP by $10 billion. Ms. Reynolds, I, you know, I'm a believer in comprehensive case management as well, but there's a cost to doing that. And so if we believe in case management, we have to do more than say we believe in case management. We have to have the resources there to actually support the kind of comprehensive case management that you're talking about. You know, and on the cliff, I mean, states currently have the option to lift the income limit through broad-based categorical eligibility. Thirty states have used this option for flexibility. I remember during the last debate on the farm bill, we had some of my colleagues on the Republican side talking about eliminating categorical eligibility and taking away states' ability to be flexible. And even with the elimination of these waivers for the A-Bod population, that's taking away states' flexibility. What happens if a factory closes in a particular community? What happens if there's, you know, all of a sudden, a real big dip in the economy? I mean, I think states need to have that flexibility to be able to provide people with basic food assistance. Mr. Holzer, I mean, you know, can you explain a little bit? I mean, one of the things I mentioned earlier is that there are a lot of people who are working, who are on SNAP. And part of the problem is that, you know, wages are low. You get people who could be working and still be so poor that they fall into this category where they have to take, receive benefits from the social safety net. Can you explain a little bit about the prevalence of low-wage jobs in the economy? And if the goal is to help SNAP participants no longer need nutrition assistance, what kind of investments do we need to make? I mean, without access to skilled training, how likely is it that lower-skilled workers can earn their way off of SNAP?
So you are correct. There are tens of millions of low-wage jobs in America today, depending on how we define that. By all measures, there are many of them. They are concentrated in agriculture, retail trade, the lower end of the service sector. There are also jobs that pay better, but increasingly in America, it is only possible to get one of those middle-paying jobs with some amount of post-secondary education or training, including on-the-job training. And that's been the big change from earlier decades in America. Historically, there were production jobs in manufacturing, clerical jobs that paid well for high school graduates, and even high school dropouts in some cases. Those have largely disappeared. The remaining work options available for people with only high school, as I said, are in those lower-wage sectors where the earnings, even working year-round full-time, do not get people, do not get a single earner above the poverty line. So the way forward is to get people more post-secondary education or work experience, but of the type that employers value. And I fear another thing we do in America is we send, we send many millions of students to college, including community colleges, but too many of them fail to complete any credential, or they get credentials, like an associate's degree in liberal studies, that employers don't value. So I think we need both. There are a lot of employers right now, especially in a tight labor market, who need more skilled workers. There are lots of options in community colleges and in other contexts that provide that training, and we got to get more people who are capable of getting the training into those situations to create the skills that can lift people up.
And by the way, going back to something Ms. Reynolds said, I mean, I think we ought to be talking in general terms about how you end poverty. I believe we ought to be asking the question, how you end hunger in this country? I proposed for several years that there be a White House conference on food, nutrition, and hunger to try to get a comprehensive plan together. But we also have to need to know the people in the population we're dealing with. Is able-bodied adults without dependents population, I suggest we do a hearing on that population because it is complicated. But, you know, they are eligible for SNAP only three months out of every three years unless they work. In your opinion, is that a realistic time, knowing that this is a complicated population, to expect them to be able to, you know, transition?
What we see in Fort Worth really depends on the level of post-secondary education they have. That's our experience, too. We need people to complete some sort of credentialing in order to do that. And so a journey out of poverty is not a six-month journey. Most families, it's not a 12-month journey. Usually, it takes several years to move a family to a place of how the federal government defines poverty, to living wage income with a small amount of savings and no inappropriate debt.
Thank you. I yield back. The gentleman yields back. Now, recognize the gentleman, Mark Saw. Mr. Crawford, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. And Mr. Lotzner, you had a couple of recurring themes in your testimony I'd like to get you to expand on. One of those is changing the mindset. You mentioned that a couple of times. Changing it from what to what? Talk about that a little bit.
The main thing is changing it from, nothing's going to work. You know, it's just, there isn't any hope. Those people over there are gonna, I'm talking, using the language that I hear, are, they're going to have the good stuff, and I'm not, to changing it to, no, actually, this whole business of prioritizing work, and if I can organize myself to, no, I'm not going to, no matter what, I'm not going to let my kids stop me from going work, you know, I'll find some way to get them on the bus to go to school, or whatever it is, prioritizing work. There are a whole set of assumptions on, in a middle-class, which I think is where we're trying to get people to, a middle-class lifestyle that I think many of us don't even notice because we, I don't know, we accept them. So a mindset shows up in behavior. So you ask somebody, "Well, are your work ready?" And they'll say, "Yeah, sure, of course." And you say, "Okay, do you have a photo ID?" "Well, no." So what employer's going to hire you unless you can even prove that, for instance? It's, like Mr. McGovern said, it's complicated. If I was, last week, I was in somebody's apartment, one of our students, and as I walked in, it's a very friendly place around, okay? Nevertheless, there are, I don't know if I, I don't want to say things like that here, but so there's urine in the hallways, there are signs saying, "If you throw up, clean it up." And I walk in because he hadn't been showing up to class, and I wanted to find out where he was. And he was just getting it together because the week before his cousin had been shot. And now, not everybody's like this, I understand, I'm going to the extreme. And a couple days before, his best friend had been shot. And so his mind just could not handle continuing his training. He was 19 years old. He was so into it, really wanted to do it. But what I'm saying about where his mindset was, was just survival. Let me survive.
Right. So that dovetails with the other recurring theme that you brought up, soft skills.
Yeah.
Okay, so soft skills are not something that institutions of higher learning invest in typically, because those soft skills are usually acquired through modeled behavior. So how do you address that? I mean, okay, you've got to change the mindset. To do that, you've got to equip them with the kind of soft skills that are necessary to support a move into the economy. How challenging is that for you as an educator?
Super challenging, especially because we try to do very short-term programs. In our programs that last a year, much less challenging. We can see some, we can see more changes. Six months, it's kind of hard. Three months, it's very, very, very hard. But what we do is, we actually found an assessment from a company called Learning Resources Incorporated that does a very good job at assessing employability skill level, the kind of soft skills that you need just for work, which includes character, decision-making, stuff like that. So we test them on that. We work with them with the results. We use other tools. We use a feedback tool. There's a lot of feedback has to keep happening. Up front, we let them know, listen, when you leave the program, you're going to be a different person than when you start. And this is just standard education for being a phlebotomist or something.
Let me move into the next deal, okay? So we go from changing a mindset, trying to acquire a skill set with regard to soft skills, preparing you for the workplace. Now, as an educator, you're actually going into a curriculum to get, you know, a credential or a certification or something that's attractive to an employer. What about entrepreneurship training? You had a story about the young lady who kind of lifted herself up, pulled herself up by her bootstraps. So entrepreneurship training, is that attractive to people that are in this socioeconomic strata? Is it difficult for them to comprehend or grasp that?
Yes and no. Sorry. I think a lot of people think they can, but don't realize the amount of stuff you have to understand and really handle in running a business. I mean, the idea of a P&amp;L sheet is a little bit far away for a lot of people, but the desire and the motivation, yeah, it's there.
Well, that's, I think that's going to be the challenge. We talk about STEM education, manufacturing jobs, and so on. There's very little attention paid at that level to entrepreneurship potential, and I hope that that's something that we can expand on going forward. My time's expired. Thank you, Chairman.
And my time is expired. Now, please, recognize the gentleman from California, Mr. Panetta, for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you. I have to commend Chairman Conway for advocating for a robust budget for the Ag Committee. I mean, I know he was, last couple weeks, he's been fighting away in order to make sure that we're fully funded. But, you know, clearly, as you heard from Mr. McGovern, there is a concern based on that $10 billion cut to the SNAP programs and how that would impede our ability, our ability to reach certain populations and basically raise them out of poverty through employment and training initiatives, the one you spoke about. I guess my question, though, is, right now, you have a certain amount of funding, and you have SNAP that's addressing a certain communities, but are there still needs that are not being met right now? And what are those with the funding that you have?
I can speak to that. One of the things we see that's not being addressed is the idea of serving families holistically. You know, we have SNAP, we have TANF, we have housing, we have childcare. There's so many wonderful public benefits that our country offers, but families are whole families. They can't just, their problems aren't just food, or their problems aren't just housing. Their problems are upward mobility, their problems are stability. And so without holistic, comprehensive, long-term case management, we don't really stand a chance as a country of moving families forward, even investment in workforce and in community colleges, which I'm a big believer in. If we were investing there, yet folks aren't completing their post-secondary education, it really doesn't allow families to move ahead.
If I could add to that.
Please.
Within the SNAP population, and if we talk about the roughly 1/3 of adults in the program, the vast majority of them do not get any involvement with an E&amp;T program within SNAP or with any other local workforce or community college effort. So the population is not being touched at all. And I am open to some mix of somewhat greater pressure to engage in these activities, but at the same time, also funding for more services, more supports, more of the assessments we've talked about, maybe referrals to the local job centers, the one-stop shops for referral out. But right now, given the budgets of most of these agencies, there's no money there to engage any more than the roughly 3 million people right now. That's a very small fraction of adult SNAP recipients.
Gotcha. And I guess, Dr. Holzer, I mean, how, a smaller budget that we're, could be contending with? I mean, how would that impact SNAP E&amp;T implementation in your states, in your state?
So I live in the state of Maryland. I'm not enough familiar with that state. But what we can say, if, we don't want to, if there have to be cuts in the overall SNAP budget, we don't want that to come out of food allotments. So the logical place for these cuts to occur would be in other activities that are regarded perhaps as less essential. So I would fear that that cuts in the budget, that they would first come out of the kinds of assessments and supports that really we've all talked about, that I think are necessary to help people.
Great.
Can I just add a teeny bit? So when the SNAP budget was cut before, we saw a huge increase of our students needing food, and that is one of the reasons why a lot of people drop out, because who can think of these long-term things? So what we have done is, we've really put a lot of effort into our own food bank right at the college, where no questions asked, if you say you need food, you go in. And we've been gathering resources. However, Syracuse is a city. It's sitting in the middle of huge amounts of agriculture. So we're lucky, we can do that. We can pull a lot of food. Not everybody can.
Fair enough. Thank you. I yield back my time.
The gentleman yields back. Now, recognize the gentleman from Maryland. Now recognize the gentleman from Illinois.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I may not have heard it, but did, did you mention that you represent the Salad Bowl of America yet today? Jimmy? It's coming later, okay. Second, second round of questions. I, I thought I might've missed that. I was a little concerned that, that we might've had some issues here. And I noticed you yielded some time back, so, I was a little worried about you. Um, hey, with all seriousness, um, thanks, everyone, for being here. Uh, this, this is a, a problem that, that we recognize on a bipartisan basis, that we wanna get the, the benefits and the food to those families and those individuals who need it the most. Uh, I've been very active working with our local food banks and, uh, food bank directors in Central and Southwestern Illinois, and had the chance to visit the Central Illinois Food Bank and their executive director, Pam Olataras, a longtime friend of mine. And, and while with her, uh, we talked about bringing to light some of the success stories of individuals and families who have gotten SNAP benefits, and, and how they've used them to work themselves and their families into a better situation to achieve their American dream. And Ms. Reynolds, I, I enjoyed hearing some of the, the stories that you relayed. And as a matter of fact, um, I want to also commend the chairman of the subcommittee, Mr. Thompson, for focusing this hearing on pathways to success for SNAP recipients. I wanna relay one story from Central Illinois that, that Pam gave me. She shared with me that at the age of 15, a woman named Kelly had a newborn baby and needed assistance in providing for her child. She applied for and received both food stamps and WIC to assist her and the child, uh, during their, their season of need. And seven years later, when Kelly was 22, she graduated college and was fortunate to no longer need SNAP assistance. Kelly's child now has grown up and has a master's degree in education, and has made Kelly a grandmother. Kelly believes that were it not for her ability to receive these benefits, uh, during her season of need, both her and her child's lives would be drastically different. We hear these stories, we see these stories often, and this is the type of success story I hope we can all gather around as we move into the next farm bill, and, and begin this debate in a bipartisan way, so we can get to success to help families like Kelly's. I also represent a lot of rural areas, and that is my concern, my question to whomever wants to answer it first. I think there's a lot of issues that are addressed in rural areas, or that aren't addressed in rural areas, like they may be addressed in places like Syracuse, where there's easy access to, to transportation, easy access to good foods that may be grown in Jimmy's district. We may not have access to those foods in rural areas, although we should. So, what are you, what are your ideas for addressing the problem of access to these benefits and being able to use these benefits once they're given in rural areas? Because there are a lot of communities I represent where the only store is a convenience store and a gas station. So, where is that access to good food for those individuals who may not live in urban areas? And also, what flexibility may they need to be able to get the, the sustenance to be able to be that success story like Kelly? Who wants to start? Tick-tock, tick-tock. Mr. Dr. Lotzer?
Um, so, uh, a, a scholar at the University of Washington named Scott Allard, uh, has, has done some research in this area. Uh, and, and he's documented really exactly what you said, Congressman, that in the rural areas, the, the availability of, of the support services is, is a great deal lower. Uh, and, and, and so, uh, the perception is accurate, uh, again, it would probably take an injection of funds, but we need to improve people's transportation to available jobs, more robust placement services, maybe at the local American Job Center. I mean, there are fewer employment opportunities, uh, in these areas as well, outside of, of agriculture.
And agriculture's not bad, bad, bad employment to be in.
It, 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 it may not be. Uh, it tends to be, on average, quite low wage, but again, with the right work supports, uh, I think it's fine to help move people in. But again, having them access to services is more challenging and probably would require, uh, some extra resources, uh, to, to overcome that.
Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
I am a social worker by training, not an economist, but I've grown very fond of economists over the years, specifically in our work with the University of Notre Dame. And I would, I would say, uh, rural poverty is a really serious thing. We serve a 28-county diocese, uh, Catholic churches throughout the nation, serve a lot of rural areas. And all in all, I don't think that there's a lot of innovation that has occurred in rural communities like it needs to be. So, my encouragement would be investment in innovation pilots throughout America, specifically in rural areas, that are rigorously evaluated, so we can understand what really works and what makes the difference, and then double down there.
May be a very good idea for the next farm bill. I'm out of time. I yield back.
The gentleman's time has expired. Now, please recognize the gentleman from North Carolina, Ms. Adams, for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Thompson, ranking member McGovern, and thank you all, uh, to the witnesses for your testimony. Uh, food insecurity and poverty are persistent challenges for many of the communities in the 12th District of North Carolina that I represent, and SNAP is a vital part of the solution to these problems. However, while I think education and training is, is hugely valuable and a vital service that SNAP can provide, SNAP is, is not a work program. It is a nutrition program meant to help those who are struggling to put food on the table. And while we should always look for ways to improve SNAP, we should not forget this ultimate mission. And so, um, Dr. Um, Lotzer, uh, SNAP, uh, ENT programs are required to provide supportive services such as transportation and childcare to the participants, but in many states, it seems like they aren't providing these services, or they're providing them at a very low reimbursement level. So, can you speak to how important these services are to supporting low-wage workers and helping them find and maintain employment?
Uh, very simply, they're, they're extremely important. Um, the, the first service that people need, and I think both my colleagues have, have addressed this, is getting a connection with employers that a lot of people simply can't generate on their own. If we don't want the SNAP ENT program to do that, then we would need to improve people's access to the local job centers, uh, where people are experienced, or, or to, to have a job developer reach out to employers. But once that connection is made, uh, and, and once, uh, it, it seems like an employer is willing to hire a person based on their skill level, uh, childcare for, for parents with small children, uh, if, if they don't have childcare, but they're already of school age, then, then the number of hours is, is quite restrictive, makes it hard, hard to work. So, the childcare is really critical, and, and of course, transportation, uh, matters as well for, for people. Uh, and, and especially if you're talking about people living in an impoverished neighborhood, whether it's urban or rural, and the employment may be available, but it might be over some significant distance, uh, to which public transportation is not available, providing the transportation could be a key factor.
Okay. So, the, um, there is, there's, there's no approach now to provide, um, training for long-term employment, because that's really what it's gonna take? So, are you?
Oh, uh, uh, as I indicated, uh, the, if we're looking for the biggest increases in earnings capability, that does come from, uh, training, the kinds of, plus the kinds of services that we've all talked about, but, but again, often linked to employment in, in specific sectors, the, the training, uh, the, the sector-based training or work-based learning are the best models. Uh, and again, that involves linking with the right employers, and also making sure that the individuals in question are trainable, in the sense of, of good basic skills, uh, and, and job readiness.
So, in, in view of what you've just said, do you think it's right to sanction SNAP participants?
Do I favor sanctions?
Yeah.
There, there are circumstances in which that might be reasonable. My own view is that everybody should be offered an appropriate activity, a work activity or, or a training activity before they are sanctioned. If a reasonable and appropriate SNAP activity is presented to people not working, and if it's turned down, sanctions may be appropriate. Uh, I am very concerned about sanctions on families with small children, where the cuts can actually do real damage, uh, and, because it creates food insecurity, it creates stress on the children. So, so that's why I'm always reluctant to sanction those kinds of families. But again, I, I oppose it unless appropriate activities are provided for people who cannot provide them themselves.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. G. I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Now recognize the gentleman from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Appreciate you all being here. Um, my background is I'm a veterinarian, um, and I grew up kinda poor, and my wife and I were on food stamps when we were 19, so I understand the importance of that. We were on that for about six weeks, and, uh, probably wouldn't, it was a benefit to have, for sure. Our goal was to get, get in it, get off of it as quick as we could, and we did. And so, our goal right today in this farm bill is to make sure that the program is there for those that need it, and that we have the integrity of the program long-term. You know, in our country facing economic hardship, uh, if we don't change some things. And so, reforms need to be made. Reforms, not cuts, you know, because what we wanna make sure is that the people that truly need this have this. Uh, we've seen several states implement, uh, work requirements, um, Alabama, Maine, Kansas, Florida. In your experience, we've seen a decrease of people on the assistance program. In your experience, have you seen any deleterious effects to the people, um, that have been removed from those programs? Anybody?
I'm still stuck on the, uh, work requirements thing. So, if I can for, I, I work with, uh, also, a large social service agency that distributes temporary assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and one of the things about work requirements is that, uh, it turns into, uh, the speed with which a person can find a job, any job, I don't care, um, meaning the, the job coach needs, needs to get their 150, 250 people into jobs. Those jobs almost inevitably are jobs that are undesirable to the person, and they'll, they'll be right back where they started in a matter of weeks or maybe months. So, taking a pause and, um, allowing a person to, um, A, encourage training, um, and B, move into a, a really sustainable career is gonna help.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Lotzer.
I, I don't know of any specific studies in those four states that address that question of ones.
Okay.
Uh, we do know, uh, that, uh, in the aftermath of welfare reform 20 years ago, you had mixed effects. Some people did better, they were able to move to more consistent formal work, some people did worse. There were, were families, there's been a documented increase in struggling families, and, and we know that for a lot of those families, the access to food stamps has often been what, what keeps them above water. Uh, Professor Catherine Eden at Johns Hopkins University has, has documented very, very low-income families, families with very little access to cash, to cash, uh, and, and the access to food stamps is really critical. We also know how deleterious the effects of toxic stress is on children, uh, in, in families where their food stamp benefits are cut. So, even though I don't know specific studies of what you've talked about, there's broader evidence that suggests we move very, very carefully in that area.
Yeah, I look forward to getting that information. Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, uh, thank you for your question. I would say, uh, three things. The first is that, um, I commend, you know, the idea of this is a program for those who need it. What I would really encourage first is that there's a lot of people who need food stamps in our country and experience food insecurity that are working, but they are still having to make choices between food on the table for their children at night, or medication that they or their children might need. We've gotta really look at benefits expanding to get to a place of self-sufficient wages.
Let me ask you something on that, since you're with Catholic charities. How important is it with the faith-based communities, food banks, things like that, supplementing things like this in a community? Because community is where it needs to be healed, versus the federal government and everybody looking for the federal government. What's your thoughts?
Absolutely. Great question. Uh, it's a both-and type, uh, model. I mean, we need you, and you need us, and we need our friends at the community college to provide excellent education, and we need to partner with our community colleges to help ensure that students are graduating.
Let me go to Mr. Lotzer right now, because you're at the community college level. Uh, and what I've heard and what I've seen is, we're teaching basic skills at a community college level. Where have we broken down so that people aren't prepared by the time they get there? Because what we're doing is we're treating a symptom. How do we change that narrative? And I know it's beyond the scope of this meeting, but it, it seems like
Yeah, no, it's important.
We're not as prepared as we should be at the community college level.
Yeah, it's true. Uh, the answer is, we need to start working in, in the high schools already from 10th and 11th grade. Make sure that, you know, there's, there are student retention efforts in the high schools and basic skills training in the high schools.
I would propose we need to work earlier than that, like at the elementary and at the family level in the beginning, so that by the time they get to the junior college, they're focused on a career. And I know not everybody is, but...
Exactly. So, so people have to change the, the model of college, honestly, to
Thank you. I appreciate your input. I'm out of time. Thank you all.
The gentleman's time has expired. Now, please, to recognize my colleague from Pennsylvania, Mr. Evans, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to yield a few seconds to the ranking member.
Ranked members recognized.
I just, I just wanna respond to my colleague from Florida, when he asked, you know, whether there are any kind of bad impacts from some of these increased, more stringent work requirements that some states have imposed, and the answer to that is yes. Um, and there's lots of stories, but again, I'll go back to this Washington Post story that I, I referenced in the beginning, uh, which begins, "For a period of time last year, uh, he lost his food stamps as a result of Maine's increased, more stringent work requirements. Tim Keefe, an out-of-the, out-of-work and homeless Navy veteran, used his military training to catch skin and eat squirrels, roasting the animals over an open fire outside the tent he pitched in frigid Augusta, Maine." It goes on to explain his, his plight, but this is not unusual, and that is why we need to understand the population of people that we are dealing with. It's, it doesn't all fit into a nice, neat, you know, category. This is a very complicated population, um, and if we wanna end poverty, we need to understand the people we're dealing with. And I thank the gentleman for yielding.
Thank you. I've, uh, listened to all of the testimony, uh, this morning, and obviously going through it, and I, I just wanna ask a real succinct question and go down the line. Does kicking people off of SNAP encourage work?
I would argue that if, if the only thing you do is kick, kick people off SNAP, the answer is very little, because the rigorous evidence...
No, no, does that mean yes and no? I'm trying to understand.
Uh, if, if that's the only thing we do, the answer's probably no.
Okay. Can I go to the next question?
Sure.
If you take away their SNAP benefits, they're not gonna be thinking about work, they're gonna be thinking about quick cash.
So, that means, what, yes and no?
Uh, what that means is not sustainable work, but, uh, bringing in income by any means usually means it's not reported, certainly they're not paying any income tax on it, and it's something that can often land people in jail.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Okay. Um, I'd like to go to Ms. Reynolds a little bit. In your testimony, you said at the end of it about, "We must invest differently." Be very specific, and what do you mean when you say, "We must invest differently"? What, if you had your, your chance to sit here, how would you suggest we invest differently?
So many of our federal safety net programs are judged by the number of people who are receiving them or rolling off the rolls. And at the end of the day, what we need to be concerned about is the number of Americans who are living a life of stability. And so, for me, I feel like we need to invest differently upfront, so, long-term, we don't have to invest as much, because we're moving more families out of poverty, allowing them to provide for themselves.
Uh, we know that, that many SNAP, uh, participants are actually working while receiving benefits, and many more work immediately before participating in programs. It seems to suggest that the program is in a unwillingness to work, but rather, the growing role of low-wage work in the economy. Can you explain, um, a little bit about the issue around low-wage jobs, and I'll go down the panel on this one? Give some explanation about this?
Um, we, we have had a, a, a large growth, uh, in, in the low-wage sector in America. Uh, as, as I indicated earlier, there used to be good-paying jobs available to people with, without post-secondary education or training. Those have largely disappeared. So, so you, now you have extremely large bodies of employment for folks with very little education, often in the low end of the service sector, or in retail trade, or in agriculture, uh, which, which means that more working people need supports. Uh, food stamps are just one kind of support. Uh, I'm also a big fan of things like the earned income tax credit, which incentivizes people to work more, uh, to get the aid, uh, and, and, and I think the economic changes have simply created a situation where if we want people working, uh, and, and, and surviving and, and being able to raise families, we need to raise the number of supports, along with the right incentives to make that happen.
Yes. Um, yeah, exactly. Uh, there are a lot of low-wage jobs which people do have, which will leave them in Alice, but more than that, there, it's, it's a generalized structure of how a lot, a lot of our very large corporations work, which aren't based, uh, locally, in that people will have jobs and they don't know next week how, how many hours or which hours they're gonna work. And they're tethered to three hours here and six hours there. If there's any, uh, pressure that can be put on corporations to have, uh, an, an understanding that you need to have a long-term employment and stable employment, and it's not just you need to have a long-term employment and stable employment, and it's not just about their bottom line, that would help.
We see the working poor every day, not able to receive benefits because of the benefit income cutoff. And so, like I said in my testimony, I couldn't encourage more for us to consider benefits not cutting off at the federal level or the state levels until we get families to self-sufficient wages.
You back the balance of my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
General's time expired. Now recognize Dr. Marshall from Kansas for five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think my first question would be for Mr. Lotzner. Mr. Lotzner, I'm a community college graduate. My wife, a community college graduate, got a nursing degree. We have 10, 11 community colleges, technical colleges in my state, and they do the best job of quickly pivoting to the needs of what that community needs for good-paying jobs. And you share, you know, specific—I'm going to mention Cloud County Community College, Wind Energy. It's a two-year program. The kids can't finish even one year before they get grabbed, and they're making $50,000,[650.16][650.16]$60,000 a year, which is a very livable amount of wage in my area. So how do you measure success? What are you doing to gather data to measure success?
Success in community colleges is usually measured by completion rates, which, as Ms. Reynolds said, are pretty abysmally low. I know at our college, 47% of the people who start don't finish. 15.4% of people who intend to do a two-year degree do it in two years. Everybody else, three, four, five, six, or they don't. But there's another measure of success that we do in our Workforce Development Department, which is how many people have jobs in the field that they went and trained for at least two years out after school. How do we measure for that? We keep calling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of my technical colleges in the aircraft industry, which has a 99% success rate of getting a good job when you're done, I think that's a great way of measuring success. Ms. Reynolds, I'll come to you. Catholic Charities, alive and well in my district, we talked about, does such a great job. I'm an obstetrician, working with my pregnant moms, as well as our immigration issues. Talk about case management a little bit. What's the secret to success, successful case management? Be more specific.
Great. A case manager is one who spends about half their time connecting a client and helping problem solve what a family's facing. That's childcare, that's transportation, that's housing, all of those sorts of things. That's enrollment in community college. And then the other half of their time, they're functioning as a coach, a therapist, that sort of thing. The toxic stress people in poverty face is very real. The lack of belief in oneself is very real. The hopelessness our families, that we find them in, is very real. And if we don't have someone walking alongside of them when they fail a class at a community college saying, "We know you failed, but you can do this. Let's go, let's move forward," oftentimes they don't succeed. And so for us, good case management is somebody who is meeting very regularly with a client, face-to-face with a client, seeing a client make progress toward their goals. What we measure success, every 21 days, progress on their action step. And a case manager is really playing that role of accountability partner, cheerleader, coach, therapist, whatever hat that that client needs at that time.
Thanks. Yeah, one of my colleagues asked me, "Why do I do so many town halls and round tables?" And part of my job is to encourage the encouragers, to encourage your people out there doing these jobs, and just to tell them that they're doing a great job. I'm going to come back to my friend from the community college. In your testimony, you talk about not—let me get it right here—the power of case management and helping move—oh, back to you, okay. Train people in jobs that may not exist in your region. My community colleges do a great job of pivoting very quickly to the needs. I mentioned the Wind Energy. Garden City has a diesel engine program. We have lots of tractors in Kansas, so they train them how to work on diesel engines. K-State Salina has a maintenance program for UAVs, which is growing tremendously in my district. How does your community college try to deal with the anticipated needs, the future of jobs, rather than yesterday's jobs?
Yeah. The—what we try to do, as a matter of fact, is look for the future jobs that are happening right around the corner. So that's why I said we look 18 months out when we talk to employers, and we use a database called Burning Glass. It's a private thing, kind of expensive, but really good, done by a bunch of geeks from Boston. And—sorry.
Technical term?
I think so, yeah. And when we find only 18 months out which jobs are hiring, then we can start training. When we looked for programs that are such as Green Jobs, we run a risk in our area, because they may show up, they may not. Curriculum development takes at least two years, and then it's going to be another half a year at least before somebody signs up for college, and then they start, and the two years to learn is really four years. You're looking at seven years from the time you had the idea about what's going to happen. So you need to focus on very short-term job opportunities.
Before I yield back, do you realize that there's a reception night for rural community colleges in DC? Talk to my staff.
Okay.
I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Now recognize gentleman from Florida, Mr. Lotzner, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and really enjoyed the testimony that you all have given this morning. In my district, one out of every four Floridians is food insecure. And that is in the—I have six of the eight counties with the highest food insecurity in the state. This is strongly influenced how I look at the agricultural and the farm bill. Today, with this discussion of SNAP and E and T, I want to remind the committee that in 2016, only five states, as we heard others, ensured that all SNAP beneficiaries in this state that was subject to three-months time limits were provided E and T training, which I think is critical. That's unacceptable, and we need to address the problem in the 2018 farm bill. Mr. Holzer, in my district, I have—the district we have the second-highest poverty rate in the state of Florida. I represent many folks who are looking for work and are trying their hardest to provide for their families. When the mandatory ABWD work requirement went into effect in 2016, the Florida Department of Children and Family estimated that 591,000 were removed from SNAP in the first year. How can we amend current laws so that the vulnerability of communities are not excluded from the nutrition, the nourishment that they deserve?
Well, Congressman, I would change policy and practice with regards to the ABOD population. As I indicated earlier, I would more carefully assess their employability and provide both some people in the field call a combination of help and hassle, pressure to engage in services and activities, but also assistance and help in doing so. And frankly, one thing that could be considered is, in return for that engagement, to suspending the time limit more easily. I mean, I know right now that the time limit is suspended for people who engage in work or are prescribed activities for 20 hours a week. I would probably increase the assistance, maybe drop the work hours, just to make it easier for more people to do something productive, but still have access to the food stamps that they often need as a work support.
Okay. And Ms. Reynolds, this question is directed to you. You know, I grew up in the country, you know, and where people, to a large extent, when I was growing up, was not on SNAP or any other program. You know, they provided for themselves and helped each other. Now, I know, how do you deal with the situation where some people who are on this program that shouldn't be there? And people are very smart, so every time sometime when the federal government implements some requirements, a lot of people are very smart how to get around those requirements, you know? So I guess when I'm working on this, I'm trying to see—I know people who need it the most, really need it, but there are a lot of people who are gaming the system. How do you go and deal with that? What do you do in order to stop that?
That responsibility really in our community falls to the state of Texas. So what we see a lot in our organization is, we work with a lot of families. Most of the time, our families aren't on a lot of benefits that they do qualify for. One of our goals or measures of success is families being off of public assistance. However, what we often see is, we enroll them in public assistance until we can move them further along the spectrum to eventually get them off of public assistance. So our—we've seen the anecdotal story of somebody who's taking advantage of the system, but generally speaking, what we see at Catholic Charities Fort Worth is people who want more for their children than what their life looks like today.
Okay, and I know—I have to give back a minute. In Duval County, there's about 200,000 people that go with that food every day, you know? And I won't—you won't be able to answer this question, but I would like to know, and I've gone to food banks, helped with mail deliveries, who get non-perishable items and so forth, how to get nourishment to these people, especially kids, and that's an issue. But at that, Mr. Chairman, I'll just yield back. It's just something on my mind.
Gentleman yields back. Now please recognize gentleman from New York, Mr. Fosil, five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for holding this important hearing today, and thanks the witnesses for coming. I also am on the Budget Committee, and I would just note that the—we've heard a lot about the budget. The budget does presume $10 billion in reduced spending over 10 years, and it's important to note that this program will spend somewhere between $600 and $700 billion over that 10-year period. And I think the presumption is, is that if there were more stringent work requirements, that there would be certain reductions in levels. Now, I don't know if—if how this will manifest itself, but I can tell you that I don't think I've heard virtually anything here today that one would disagree with. I mean, you hear the needs, the problem with the income cliff. I hear this all the time from employers, small business employers in particular, who tell me, "People will come to them looking for work, and they will decline a job because of the prospect of losing benefits, because of the dramatic income cliff." And there's no doubt that—I hear from food pantries and others that there's the need and the demand for their services are more significant now than they have been in recent years. So there's something going on. Then I hear from employers constantly who tell me, "They have jobs, they just can't find qualified people." So what are the—if we were to—what percentage of those people, Ms. Reynolds, do you think on food stamps generally throughout the country are getting the kind of coaching that you're talking about would be so important to getting people into jobs and helping them move in a direction so they have less dependency on these programs?
I would say a very slim margin. And if I could encourage one thing and one thing alone today—I love how your colleague talked about—one of his roles was to be an encourager of encouragers, because we have a team just at our Catholic Charities of over 400 people who dedicate their life to trying to move families out of poverty. And so make it easier on us. Make it easier on our team at Catholic Charities and Catholic Charities throughout the country, and align these benefits where it makes sense for families to move ahead.
What if we were to presume some savings in EBT in SNAP benefits and plowed those savings into the kind of coaching and educational opportunities for people that are being—that's being—that Dr. Holzer is referring to and that Mr. Lotzner is conducting at the community college level?
Yeah, I'm probably not familiar enough about where savings could be realized, but I do think it's really important that we invest differently, that we invest upfront, and we invest in intensive case management.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Lots.
If I could just address that. The vast majority of adults on SNAP never set foot in an American Job Center. There's over 3,000, what we used to call one-stop shops around the country, that are there to help connect people to jobs. They never get those services. They never get the counseling available in those centers that would help them identify appropriate education and training activities to improve their employability. So anything we could do within SNAP to better connect people to the labor market services that are already there, I think would be a big step forward.
Maybe a means by which we could perhaps bridge some of the Republican-Democrat philosophical divide would be to actually take savings if they accrue and plow them into those kind of efforts. You know, here's the crux of the matter, it seems to me, that the public is oftentimes very frustrated by what they perceive to be the abuse of the system. Under Sheriff in my district, related to me not a month ago, every single drug dealer he arrests has an EBT card for food stamps on him. And yet, we know, and I've met with the mental health associations in my counties, the important need for people who—they may not be single adults, but they may because of mental health difficulties or other difficulties. What was related about the veteran in Maine, these people simply aren't—don't have capacity to work for a variety of reasons, whether it's mental health, whether it's drug addiction, whatever. So there has to be some means by which we can move many more of the people who are in SNAP now and move them into benefit—into productive employment by getting at this income cliff that Ms. Reynolds—any comment that Dr. Holzer or Mr. Lotzner have about the income cliff from your experience?
I would caution—I mean, it's one thing to find an income cliff theoretically for someone who finds themselves at a certain point in the earnings and hours distribution. It's another thing to find a lot of people at that cliff and for it to affect their behavior. The rigorous evidence to date does not show large negative effects on employment because of the SNAP program. It's not like 20 years ago, before welfare reform, where—the old welfare system really did disincentivize a lot of people. And SNAP right now, the rigorous evidence—and I would refer you to work by Diane Schonstenbach of Northwestern—there's almost no evidence of negative effects on work by men, and modest effects on women. So it's not zero, but this notion that massive amounts of work are being deterred is probably not accurate based on the current research.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Now recognize gentleman from Florida, Mr. Soto, for five minutes.
With the chairman's indulgence, I'd like to yield 30 seconds to Mr. McGovern.
Thank you, and I appreciate what the gentleman just said, but I just want to point out one thing. The SNAP program is one of the most efficiently, effectively-run programs in the federal government. And as Mr. Evans pointed out, the primary focus of this particular program is to make sure people have food and nutrition. Now, we can talk about better case management, which involves coordination with a whole bunch of different programs, which I think is a good idea, but let's understand about this particular program. And when you cut this program, what you are doing is you are taking food away from people. The benefit right now is about $1.40 per person per meal. That's it. That's why so many people on SNAP end up at food banks. And in 2016, we threw a million people off of the program because of the waivers disappeared. Those people aren't working, by and large, many of them. Those people have just been cut off of their food benefit because waivers haven't been extended. They're going without food. They're ending up in food banks. So again, I mean, if we want to talk about a holistic approach, that's a good conversation to have, but going out and within the context of this farm bill, finding $10 billion worth of cuts in SNAP, I think is a terrible thing to do, and it's going to make people's lives more difficult, and make it more difficult to do the kinds of things that the panelists here have suggested. I thank the gentleman for yielding.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. As we know, 2/3 of the folks on the program are children, seniors, the disabled. 75% of households where someone's able to work is working, and we already passed a major reform for able-bodied adults, where they get three months every three years. So we're talking about a really narrow section of SNAP. Now, and it's important for Americans to understand that, because I think people get the sense there's all these folks who are able to work, and they're just getting SNAP the whole time. I want to start briefly with, let's say we have seniors or those with disabilities who want to work, maybe a part-time job. We're not forcing anybody to do that, but I know some folks want to still get out of the house and make a little money. What can we do to help out seniors and those with disabilities who choose to want to work a part-time job or something of that nature? And it's for the whole panel.
I would start with assessing their needs and capabilities and taking advantage of existing labor services in our American Job Centers and to try to connect them with employers. Frankly, and it's out of the domain of this committee, I would also like to see some reforms in SSDI, in the Social Security Disability Insurance Program, which right now is not optimally set up to encourage people with disabilities to work. So that would be—because a lot of the disabled folks are not only on food stamps, but on SSDI. Instead of kicking them off food stamps, we think about changes in that program that would incentivize greater work and then get them those services.
Sure. Since my time is limited, I'm going to go to my second question, which is dealing with able-bodied adults. How are we identifying these folks who come off of this three months every three years? And what are we do— And what are we do, what do you think we could be doing better to make sure they have appropriate work and education? And I give that question to both Mr. Lotzner and Ms. Reynolds.
It's my belief that the biggest thing we can do for these families is, is walk with them, and that doesn't occur over a few months. That occurs with somebody providing good case management services to them that really is about a transformational relationship over several years.
Now, are these folks identified and then, and then relayed to your organizations efficiently right now?
Say it again.
Are these folks able-bodied working adults who are off of this three months, do we efficiently right now identify these individuals for your groups to help out with?
In some communities. I think it depends on local collaboration relationships that occur. We tend to be a large provider of case management and assistance in our local community, so we get a large number of referrals coming through our doors.
And Mr. Lotzner, if, if we identify these folks properly and efficiently, what could we be doing better to assure they have appropriate work and education?
Yeah. Short-term work training programs, because you can't take a long time. You can't do an associate degree. It's, it's the very short part that helps, number one. Number two, like I said, you have to work on the desire for a different kind of lifestyle, which people say is there, and it is there, but a demonstration of, I don't want to say regular, a working lifestyle that's full-time work, that's not, that's meaningful work. So it takes a lot, and the way to do that is really with the case management, with relationships. And case management doesn't happen, have to happen in any particular organization, but short-term programs that deal with the person. There we go.
Gentlemen, yield's back. Now recognize gentleman from Texas, Mr. Harrington, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for coming in late. We've got things that are scheduled at the same time, unfortunately, and so, being from West Texas, I always find that being rude to walk in a conversation and then act like you've been there for the whole time. I'm just curious, have there been studies about SNAP recipients engaging in community college education, skills training, and how many SNAP recipients avail themselves of those opportunities? And, I mean, is there any study like that? I didn't see anything cited. Yes, or?
There isn't a lot on SNAP recipients, because, but we know that very few of them are engaged in meaningful employment and training activities, and I think we all share the goal of seeing more of that population. We do have studies on similar low-income individuals participating in community college programs. We have some sense of the different programs that work for those folks. Some of them are associate degree programs, some of them are certificates, but again, if they have connections to employers in high-demand fields, we have that as a success there, and we'd like to see more SNAP recipients engaged in those efforts.
How do you incentivize, if very few are engaged in that, how do you incentivize this community to engage and avail themselves? Because I'm a believer in the education and skills training to empower people, improve their lives.
Well, there are incentives for the individuals, and there's also incentives for the states that implement a lot of these programs. So one can imagine, for instance, bonuses to states that engage more of these individuals in meaningful activities or that improve their outcomes. You know, at a minimum, reporting requirements can matter, and that you, some bonus for states that manage to raise the number of people engaged, again, in meaningful activities. Performance measures, although those can have a downside because they can encourage the agencies to cream and do things like that. So I think the incentive for the states and the local agencies matter. And for the individuals themselves, there is often an incentive already, that's higher earnings, as long as that money is there for, for the assessments and the support services needed to get them there.
Okay. Mr. Lotzner, do you have a comment on that? And then I just want to ask you about how you align market opportunities with your educational programs. I think community colleges are the best at that, by the way, speaking as a former vice-chancellor at a major research university, so.
Yeah.
Kudos to the community colleges out there doing great work for our country, so.
Thank you.
Any comments on the previous question and then, and then that latter comment that I made?
Yeah, on the previous question, I just wanted to say that there is incentive for individuals, and that's earning more income, but there has to be also modeling. There has to be also demonstration on the parts of people who grow up knowing SNAP and relying on SNAP and not just SNAP, but SSI or SSDI, that connecting through short-term programs at community colleges, I'm just one of these flag waivers, that, that leads to a successful, stable income that's reliable. So there has to be modeling. And how you incentivize it, I don't know. He had some good points with the state there. The second question you asked was, how do we find out which jobs are the right ones?
Yeah, but let me, let me skip over that one. I'm on the VA Committee, and as of, again, at my university back home, the one I served at in the administration, we received a lot of funding from the VA to provide great education for our veterans, and we were proud to do so, won awards by having a veteran-friendly campus, et cetera. But there are some, and some are really critical about the for-profit guys, some have gone out of business, and they worry about veterans going to schools or institutions of higher ed that may not be performing and delivering quality education. So my, my thought is, rather than us picking and choosing at the federal government, why don't we have some outcome-based funding? Why don't we give some of the money upfront, and then if the, if the population that we're interested in is persisting, is graduating, and is getting employment, then we put a little bit more money as a reward to those institutions? Why not do something like that with this population, quite frankly, with every population that the federal government is spending taxpayer dollars on? And I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back. Now recognize the, before we adjourn, I invite the ranking member to make any closing remarks that he has.
Well, I, let me, let me thank the panel for your excellent testimony and your presentations, and I think to challenge all of us to be thinking more holistically about how we deal with the issue of poverty and hunger in this country. And I'm going to close the way I began by just expressing my deep concern over our funding priorities here in this Congress. The notion that, that we would even entertain cutting SNAP by $10 billion, to me, goes against everything that I heard today in terms of how we ought to be approaching this issue. People on SNAP, you know, it's a very diverse population, and as I mentioned at the beginning, 67% of those on the program are not expected to work. They're kids, they're senior citizens, they're people who are disabled. Of those who can work, the majority are working, yet wages are so low that so many of them are still, need to rely on this program. Of those who are not working, the population is very complicated, and includes, you know, returning veterans, it includes people who are chronically homeless, people who have undiagnosed mental illnesses. It's a complicated population, and we need to treat it as such. But I think we need to, we need to reassess what our priorities here are in this Congress, but I appreciate very much your, your presentation and look forward to working with you in the future. I yield back, thank you.
Gentlemen, yield's back. And I thank the ranking member. First of all, I want to thank the witnesses for, once again, bringing your perspectives, your experience, and I can tell your passion on the topics and the issues that were discussed today, greatly appreciated. I want to thank my colleagues. I mean, this is, we have been working, the ranking member does better math than I, I can't keep track of how many hearings we've done, but it was quite a few. Twenty-three, thank you. The, twenty-three hearings, and it's, it is a, I think it's a passion of all the members of the Subcommittee. We have great participation, and I think that's reflected on how important that this, this topic is, and that we've done this with transparency, and I would agree, we found very few instances of fraud and abuse, and we're looking to see how we can make this program more effective to help American families. Want to thank the staff who do all the really heavy lifting on both sides of the aisle that help prepare us for this. You know, my principles are pretty, pretty clear, and I talk about them a lot. Fact is, nutrition matters, and farmers feed. That's why I can't think of a better place for a nutrition title than as a part of the Farm Bill. And we have one other. Would the gentlelady like to ask questions for five minutes? If so, I will yield to the gentlelady from New Mexico.
How about if I do a hybrid in respect to the chair and the ranking member, because I'm so late, and I really appreciate the conversation, so I want to certainly associate myself with those closing remarks. And the one point is that I would just love to make to the group, that in the testimony where work requirements and getting folks out of poverty is certainly an issue that is bipartisan, a one-size-fits-all model does, I agree, that never works, and recognizing that there are states like mine with such extreme poverty, have some of the hungriest families still in the country, the highest unemployment or nearly, you know, we shift positions, we're at worst and then second to worst, and there is not a job market in any community that's having any impact on our, on our overall economy. No job training, no investments, no state policy that works currently. So we got to be very careful about a federal mandate that would create either perverse incentives or not the right opportunities for states like New Mexico to make productive decisions that support families who are really in need. So, Mr. Chairman, that was very kind of you. I thank the panel, and I thank my colleagues for this hearing today. Thank you.
Gentlelady yields back. The focus of today's hearing was improving pathways to success for SNAP households. SNAP households, one of the, the, a great Illinois philosopher, Representative Rodney Davis, philosopher, used a term that I loved. It's about, he used it in today's hearing, about serving those folks who are in the season of need. And, and that's what our, I think that's what our folk, certainly our focus on. We are, the good news is, we are building on a record of bipartisan work and accomplishments. The Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act that was passed and signed by President Obama, and which really was focused on restoring greater access to more effective job training. That is, the one-stops, the career links were made reference to, and we have some great reforms that in a bipartisan way, we have accomplished those. And that was a couple of years ago, just a few years ago. And then most recently, we passed unanimously the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century, which again, is about restoring rungs on the ladder of opportunity, greater access to more effective skills-based training. And I think, coupled with our nutrition Subcommittee work that we've been doing and preparing for, we are providing and looking for greater access to more effective skills-based training in coordination with, obviously, meeting nutrition needs. We're succeeding, when we will be successful, we're going to see, I believe, more unemployed become employed, more underemployed become, to have sustainable employment, and lower wages to, to better wages. It has been noted throughout the hearing this morning that the budget resolution released this morning calls for $10 billion in reconciliation reductions from the Agriculture Committee. Several folks have offered suggestions in the press over the past few weeks for ways to cut SNAP to achieve those savings. I want to remind everyone, it's up to this committee to decide, the Agriculture Committee, how any required savings would be achieved, not the Budget Committee, and not folks who are freelancing in the press. And I'd also, would also note that we are only required to respond to reconciliation instructions that make it through the Senate and into, into a conference joint budget resolution. So for the time being, we're going to keep our eye on the ball, and that means staying focused on the next Farm Bill. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional materials and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Subcommittee on Nutrition is adjourned.